Regular meeting call to order. Councilmember LaFredo. Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Quinn?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Kim?
Here.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and Star Ledger on December 18, 2013, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are upheld at the city clerk. What we are going to do, we're going to switch just a little bit from normal procedure. We have two groups that are with us tonight. So before we go to open public session, what we like to do is recognize those groups. And I'm going to start by asking some of the young ladies sitting in the front to stand up as I call your name and face the rest of the audience. Michaela Sorano. And you want to stand over there by Ms. Anderson, please? Joakim Jappel and Renter. Ashaya Butler. Amberlisa Avez Anderson. Zakaya Maki. Lana Washington. Joanna Leaks. Angelica Beno. Anikaia Wordsworth. At this time, what I'd like to do is read a proclamation to the winner of the oratory pageant. Angelica, could you come forward?
Angelica.
Angelica? You want to stand right here? From the city of Asbury Park, whereas the eloquent charismatic orator is a public speaking training program that culminates into an oratorical pageant that is designed to build confidence and self-esteem in the middle school girl, and whereas the eloquent charismatic orator is a structured after-school program that offers meaningful activities that result in a girl's positive attitude towards learning and helps her to develop a healthy, positive view of her confidence and a positive attitude towards learning and build confidence through the part art of public speaking and benefits girls both personally and professionally, and whereas Ms. Angelica Beno, a 13-year-old Neptune Township middle school student, praise dance ministry and acolyte ministry member, youth corps junior, usher ministry member, and member of the Youth Missionary Society, is the winner of this year's competition. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park do hereby publicly congratulate this Angelica Beno for winning this year's competition and acknowledges a job well done. What we would like to do with the other young ladies, first of all, congratulations. If the other young ladies will sit down, Angelica is going to... We'll just wait until we... You want to sit down for a second? Show them what you do good.
Pretty woman, wonder where my secret lies? I'm not cute or built to suit a fashion model size, but when I start to tell them, they think I'm telling lies. I say, it's in the reach of my arms, the span of my hips, the stride of my step, and the curl of my lips. I'm a woman, phenomenally phenomenal woman. That's me. I walk into a room, just as cool as you please, and to a man the fellows stand or fall down to their knees. Then they swarm around me, a hive of honeybees. I say, it's in the flash of my teeth, the fire in my eyes, the swing of my waist, and the joy in my ear. I'm a woman, phenomenally phenomenal woman. That's me. Men themselves have often wondered what they see in me. They try so much, but they just can't touch mine inner mystery. And when I try to show them, they say they still can't see. I say, it's in the click of my heels, the bend in my hair, the bump of my hand, and the need of my care, because I'm a woman, phenomenally phenomenal woman. That's me. Thank you. That was phenomenal.
Yeah, could be a shorter ones than... Hold it way, we need it. Come on, you have to be there. You know what, turn to your side, and that way it's going to be a little more gorgeous. Eloquent charismatic orators, we need you to smile.
Angela, get in the picture, Angela. You put the whole thing together. Get in the picture.
Thank you. Let me just mention one other thing. This could not have been possible without having instructor as Ms. Anderson, Angela Avez Anderson is. She did this.
So I would just like to say one thing, because I had the great experience of being one of the judges on this contest. And just so everybody understands what these girls did, they picked a Maya Angelou poem, they memorized it, they recited it, and then talked about why they had picked that poem and why they had identified with it. So not only public speaking and building confidence, and just an amazing job by Angela Anderson. My hat goes off to you. And every single one of you, as somebody who sat and heard every one of you speak, you did a phenomenal job. I swear to God, it was, as one of the judges, it was extremely difficult to pick a winner, and I can't say like kudos to all of you. Amazing, amazing job.
There's one other thing that I want to go over before we go into the open public session. I am so, so proud of some ladies that are here right now. I'm going to ask them to stand up. Madeline Ricks. Ruth Lawns. And Julia Cook. And you don't have to stand up too, because I was with these young ladies the first weekend together. The reason why I asked them to come, and you will notice, they all have the same shirt on, and they will also show you the medals that they have. These women went to the senior Olympics. I mentioned... Madeline and Julia have gold medals on for bowling. Ruth has a bronze for dart throwing. And I just happen not to have the shirt on, but I was there also, and I happened to come home with three gold medals. Let me say this to you, though, the importance of this. There were 1,200 people in Woodbridge that weekend. And how the Olympics is, it's anyone from age 50 to whatever. As a matter of fact, there was a man 100 years old that won gold in the bocce contest. They must have had 17 different activities to participate in. They're going to have the nationals in Minnesota next year, next spring. The, while we brought home the gold for the city, that's not the main objective of the senior Olympics. The objective of the senior Olympics is to get seniors out, active, talking to different individuals, and I think each one of these ladies would say, it was a fan... Well, can someone talk about the miniature golf? Just one thing, for real.
Well, we know somebody couldn't find a hole. We know that. We had to tell them, the hole is where the flag is. The hole is where the flag is. But we had a great time. It was get you out your comfort zone. Get you moving. That's what's wrong. We don't move enough. If you're sitting home looking at the four walls, try something different. You're not the only 60, 70, 80, 90-year-old out there. And we had a ball over three days, fifth, sixth, and seventh. It was great. It was hot, but it was great. And we all had a great time. And our mayor, which I am so proud of, her three gold medals, he was our transfer. So I think you owe us a gas bill.
Next year, next year, we want 30 to 35 people to go to the senior Olympics to represent the city of Asbury Park, and I thank each of you for coming. Thank you.
May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker? One time around? All in favor?
Aye.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments.
Am I missing something else? I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Great job, ladies.
You can tell when young people stand up and say the pledge of allegiance. I've never heard that he said this loud before. Yes. The public session, everyone is left, I believe, at this point, so we are opening the public session. Anyone that would like to come to the mic and speak, please state your name and your dress, and you have three minutes. Well, nobody wants to come, then, so it's okay. No, here we go. Here we go.
Good evening. My name is Pat Bone, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I just wanted to say thank you to the Asbury Park Fire Department with their amazing response to a fire violation and how quickly they took care of it. Kevin Keddie and Gary Guyberson. I was just amazed by the response. It was so fast, especially here in Asbury where things usually take a long time to get done. My second item, we finally got the light, new light posts on Kingsley between 6th and 7th, and they look fantastic. They got rid of the flying saucers, those industrial-looking lights, and it just softens the whole area. It gives such a welcoming look. I'd like to see them put around 6th Avenue and 7th Avenue. It's wonderful. And I was also wondering, is there a lighting plan with the water, the development, the redevelopment plan? Is there some sort of lighting plan, or where does it come from? Is it planning? Is it the architectural review committee? Who handles lighting? Anybody know?
I believe there is a lighting plan as part of the waterfront redevelopment plan. I could ask Don Sammott to reach out to you tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd love to see him. I really would.
Very good.
My last item is zoning. And maybe Mr. Kelly can answer this. There has been zoning complaints at the Berkeley with cars parking on the sidewalk and the grass areas every weekend, anytime there is an event. Now, I know zoning has talked to them, but it's being ignored. I think it was two or three times. So I'd like to know, what is the procedure? And the police department can't do anything because that's not their jurisdiction. So what is the procedure? After zoning speaks to somebody and they're ignored, what happens? What is the next step? To get something accomplished?
Well, I don't believe that zoning needs a next step with another governmental agency. Zoning issues complaints themselves, and I have seen many complaints issued by the zoning officer. I know that the Berkeley is having some difficulty just recently as having lost a temporary parking lot that they were using, and they spoke with me recently today. They're going to be providing me with a list of events, the dates, and how many people will be attending those events, and we're going to do our best to assist them in trying to identify parking. But I will ask the zoning officer to go out there, and if she believes there is a violation, she will issue a complaint.
She has been out there, and she has spoken to them, but they ignored it. So after that happens, is there fines? Is there anything else that can be done?
There would be fines.
Who does the fines? Who issues fines?
Well, again, it would be the zoning officer in municipal court, and I will speak with that person, and we can have a conversation tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Clock's starting. My name is Robert Thodder. I own the business and the property at 501 Main Street, which is the razzle-dazzle laundromat. I recently did a further upgrading, which is the second time in five or six years. And since 19, well, let's go recent, since 2008, I've taken loans approximately $1.3 million. Not a rich person, but I believed enough in the town in doing what I did there to invest in that property, both to buy the rest of the property from a partner, invest in 2008, $825,000, and recently $350,000, just completed this week. I throw that out there only because I did it because I believe in the town. I have to tell you that in the beginning part of the year, I had the opportunity to sell at a very nice profit, and I chose not to because I like it here. I've been here for a very long time, since 1994. I regret that. I regret it terribly because I find this town, and I have done business in other towns, to be as business-unfriendly as I've ever seen, and I'm stuck. My property has sunk. Whatever I do here is not sustainable, and why is that? Because when the assessment came for the taxes, I was not told the truth. I called up and said, why is my assessment going up not quite three times, two and a half times? And I was told, don't worry, this is beginning of the year. The factor is going down, you won't be paying that much more. I was lied to. I'm not going to chivalry code it, I was lied to. So now I've taken on $350,000 more in debt. My quarterly bill went from on, I had to pay it on September 5th. I went from approximately $4,500 for the quarter to $10,162. I might be off a little bit. And I just don't know how you think business, I mean, I've talked to other business owners, if this is the business model for this town, this will be a ghost town. Nobody's going to want to do business here. How is this sustainable? How is this possible that you can do something like that? And I'll tell you something else, it goes past the town borders. Also this month, which I had from last year, my insurance was $7,000. Now, I had no damages from Sandy. And I then had my taxes go up to 14, I'm sorry, my insurance, property insurance and business insurance go to $14,000. And you know the reason why they said, because we really don't want to do business, you're in a flood zone? We're in a 100-year plan, we never had a flood where I'm at. Secondly, is that I was told on the side, very hard to insure businesses in Asbury Park because they consider it to be unfriendly. I'll give you seven carriers if you look at me with an arched eyebrow. So now, also this month, I figured, well, how much can we go up? We had Sandy a couple of years ago. The insurance went from seven and change to $14,000 and change to $17,000. I shopped it at seven different carriers. Nobody can do it, so I went back to the one that would. And they did everything they want us to do. And all I can tell you, this model is unsustainable. It is just crazy. And the fact that I was not told the truth back when I had a chance, I'll never forget. That's my three minutes.
Wait for your answer.
Sure. No, there's not going to be an answer.
No, nobody's going to answer.
Yeah. Okay, she said wait for your answer. There's no answer, right?
No answer.
There you go. Thank you.
So what we encourage you to do, I mean, what we encourage you to do is to call Eric, and have you talk to him at all?
That's probably a very simple mission for us, I guess.
Before you leave, do we have your phone number, please?
Sure.
Please don't give up other, like, over there. Can you write it down?
Would like.
You can leave it to Mr. Kelly.
Okay, thank you for listening.
Next, Rita.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I came in on the tail end of Mr. Gilmore's listing all the events for the month or whatever, and he mentioned the rally. I happened to see that flyer, and I don't think it's about gospel. He said it was a gospel concert at the Paramount. They're not getting a free date, are they there?
No.
Huh?
No.
No free date?
No free date.
How about the park?
No free dates.
No free dates?
They're paying all fees.
Well, I mean, I think you should investigate a little more. There's a picture on that flyer that has Al Sharpton, so I'm sure it's going to be political. I mean, like, you know, if you're going to do an event in this town, you better know what you're doing. I mean, it's not just the concert.
The Paramount is not owned or run by us. It's owned by Madison Marquette. They vote it, and they vote it to who they want to, and we cannot tell them who to vote and who not to vote to. So you may want to address that to Madison Marquette. Now, I want to take over three minutes of that.
Okay. The other thing, Mr. Kelly, I was wondering if you could get us a beach report and a parking report at the next meeting. I don't think you have it for tonight, do you?
Rita, I don't have it with me tonight, but I'm sure that by next meeting, we can get you a beach report and an updated parking report as well.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to talk about, a lot of people are talking about the park that you're going to put on the west side, and most everybody is against it that I've talked to. They don't see any reason to have a park there. They said, nobody's ever in that playground, and people pass there all the time. So, I mean, is there a way that you can change that plan and maybe put a supermarket there where people could shop? I mean, your new plan with the 64 units, there's not going to be any businesses there. I mean, we used to have three supermarkets in this town. There's no reason to put a playground and a park over there. We have, we have the most beautiful parks and lakes. So is there any way that you can, like, redo this plan?
Let me say this first of all, because I live over there, and I do see children playing in that park, so I'm not sure when you go. It is not completed at this date, but there is no decent park on the west side for children to play. That's all, too. So what is my stance on it? That we have the plans for the park. Joe's not here. It should be completed by September of next year. I have no intentions of looking at the plan, trying to change it.
Myra, this is one square mile. This is not a big city. I'm sure the kids, if there's any over there, can walk over to the east side and go to the playground. I mean, really, this is one little mile.
Thank you.
Let me just say, that park was...
I know it's not your doing.
No, okay, but it was something that the community was involved in. As much as everybody wants to say, it's just a playground for children, that's totally wrong. I wish people would go look at the picture that's put out. It's going to be a walking track for the elders, it's for young, whoever wants to walk around. It's going to be well landscaped, there's going to be a gazebo, there's going to be a stage. It could be the future home of the jazz festival. I mean, so we are trying to move stuff to the west side, and it's not just like, oh, here's a little playground for kids. It's going to be a very comprehensive park for, be it you, 3-year-olds to 83-year-olds, and it's going to be for the entire community, east side, west side, anybody. And it was something that the community wanted, and something that the free holders backed, three years of $250,000 grants, that we have the money, majority coming from the county. And I agree with Myra, I'm all for it. What I'd love to see, light industry on Springwood Avenue and buildings and jobs, absolutely, but that park is also very beneficial. That's my appeal. Thank you.
Rita, sometime you would like to sit down, I can show you what the plans are for that park, okay?
I think I was involved in it in the beginning. You know, I used to go to those meetings.
Yvonne Clayton, 908 Cookman Avenue. I just publicly want to thank George Seela for expediting the demolition of 919, 923 Cookman Avenue. Those buildings have been there for 10 years and then abandoned, and a blight on my neighborhood and a place where people could go to do whatever. So I wanted to say thank you. Next, I have a question. I have been trying for months to get my street cleaned on a regular basis, to no avail. And the latest is, I was told that in order to get the street cleaned and be on a schedule and have signs posted, I have to come before the city council and the mayor and have an ordinance passed. Is that correct?
Yes. No, I'll let Jack answer that. No.
Yeah, I don't know what the schedule is for your neighborhood, but we should have a published schedule, and if it's not...
My street is, there is a schedule, but my street is not on it.
Well, you know, we're going to have to change that. I mean, every street in the city should be on a schedule to be cleaned by one of our two street sweepers. So I will review that tomorrow, and I'll make sure that it gets posted on our website and make sure that your street is on that schedule.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Felicia Simmons, 1410 Summerfield Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm here to really address the police, the police chief, and the new things going on in policing in this city as a foreign education. I got a few calls this past first day of police task force being called on the children to kind of walk, and maybe summonses issued to the kids on their walk to send home. I'm just saying that's the wrong kind of approach to deal with the children. We're supposed to be a family. The issue of the summons, or give that kind of police state kind of feeling or mentality to the youth, just causes more tension in between you and the police. You're no longer a friend. You're now, you're hovering over them. There's not going to be any connection or friendly conversation between the two. You're causing more of an issue than a non-issue. It would have been more likely if you just came and just walked, or said hello, or greeted kids on their way home, they felt threatened, and they felt offended. And a lot of parents felt threatened and offended, and school officials felt offended. It could be more of a connection. We have a lot of policing in the city, we have a lot of youth who don't have a bad view on the police, but if we filter and continue to give that kind of atmosphere, it will brew, because hatred just brews more hatred, and conflict just breeds more conflict. If it's more possible that you can maybe sit and meet, go... If it's more possible that you can maybe sit and meet, go in and conversate with the kids. You will see in Asbury High School especially, it's a beautiful and lovely school, very peaceful and calm. And if no one will know that unless you go inside. But if you go in the hallways, you can hear a penny drop, a pin drop. And I'm just saying there's more in the city, just to have more diversity between the two. Or it's gonna cause issues and problems later. That's it.
Thank you.
Dwayne's. What does that sound like? Dwayne's small, three minutes, three minutes, it's a star program. Yeah. Dwayne's small, 1304 Madison Avenue. I wanna first thank Jill and the Asbury Park son for letting the people know that when it was written that the 18 headquarters was raided, that the prosecutor finally came out and said that there was no wrongdoing. And all the time, we maintained that we did nothing wrong. But I wanna thank her because there was a lot of media outlets that bashed us, pissed us across the front of the paper like we was the baddest thing in Asbury Park. And also scared people away from voting for us. But now, they don't seem to be nowhere found printing these articles about us being... Whatever you wanna call it.
Exonerated.
Exonerated.
I ain't saying exonerated because we ain't do nothing wrong. So you ain't exonerating me from nothing. If I ain't wrong, I ain't wrong. When I'm wrong, I admit it, I accept it, and I deal with it.
No criminal charges filed. And...
Thank you.
We're just here to help.
Thank you. And now, let me move on. Last time I was here, we spoke about those cameras. Did we get the original contract and see what was in that contract? And make sure everything was right? That's one question. And the next question is, I wanna thank Cassandra for taking the time to put together this list of contractors. She's not perfect. She needs help. So if there's anybody willing to help this lady get this contract together of local contractors and also local labor, feel free to participate. It's about solutions. We have to be solution-oriented. Thank you. Now y'all can answer my question about the camera.
Wayne, we're reviewing the contracts. We recently hired a company. We went out and got three quotes to review exactly what was wrong with the system. And then we are going to approach the vendor.
All right, thank you.
And just to follow up, I don't believe you were here earlier. I followed up on it. October 2012, the city spent close to $100,000 to 9/11 Security Cameras Incorporated. The hardware was guaranteed for three years, three-year warranty, and there was a one-year warranty on labor and support, which I asked the city manager to look into because that was October 12. Before October 13, when Mr. Quinn and myself met with the county sheriff, because 50% of our cameras were down. Why weren't they working when it was still under warranty? So we are looking into that.
All right, thank you.
Arnold Fall, here at Asbury Park. I promised myself I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I have a couple of things. Rita, I love you to death, but you're 100% wrong on the park on the West Side.
It's not me.
It is you. You're the one that don't want it. Everybody else wants it. We won't go there. Number two, I think that the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce deserves a big round of applause for putting on Oyster Fest. They seem to be the only ones that are bringing things into the town. Even though we have a director of good times, you know, I don't see what he's done for the city. And along with that, Jackie was nice enough to hire unemployed youth in the city to work the Oyster Fest. She's concerned 100% about the town and should be applauded for that. Also, the list that was put out of the local businesses is a joke. A joke. If it wasn't for Mr. King's corporation on the list, we wouldn't have a list. But anyway, I love him to death, too. If you need something, use the Chamber list. Every member, 248 different businesses in this town are listed on the Chamber of Commerce website. If you need something, use them. And Felicia, let me tell you a little something about the kids walking home from the high school. I have a videotape of me and my car being spit at by these people walking home from school the other day when I was just driving down the street. So if you wanna do anything about that, have a class at the school to train them some manners, or how to act, or how to teach them how to walk on the sidewalk, not in the middle of the street. So, you know, you may not see everything, but I videotaped the whole thing because it's out of control. And the police are doing what they should do. They're not making arrests, but they're out there keeping the order because these kids don't know how to act. Thank you.
The only, and I'm gonna, because Tony and I have talked about this, we get numerous complaints with people who live on Sunset Ave about letting out when the kids get let out of the high school. And good manners, bad manners, it's a safety issue, right? So part of the police presence is to ensure their safety. And I think that's probably the top priority of the police department. So I'm just throwing that out.
It's not, I'm just...
Excuse me.
Excuse me. Then Arnold, I agree that, Jackie.
Yay, Jackie!
Hello, Councilman, Council Jerry Stranawong. Last week, I listened and I thought about it. Councilman Lefredo talked about extraordinary aid and how we were weaning ourselves off it, or Asbury Park was getting less money. But John's becoming a professional politician because he learned how to do 51% truth and 49 cents makeup, 49% makeup. Because we have $6 million extraordinary aid became permanent aid. And it was really disingenuous that he misled the lady and made it sound like Rudy did a good job. And when I watch someone like Rita tell me her taxes went up 48% in the last seven years, I only have John Lefredo and Sue Henderson to thank for that. Okay, now, Sue talked about liking the picture of the hotel on Fifth Avenue. All they did was take a night picture and made the hotel lit up. If she was a true councilperson, she would've said, I liked the picture, but what are you gonna do to make sure you hire local people to work in your hotel? The council should make a rule, when a new hotel comes up or a new big business like that that's gonna hire 100 people, 20% of them should live in town, or 30%. You'll bring in new people and you'll give entry-level jobs to people that don't have a job. So that's what Sue should be asking, not complimenting iStar for a fancy picture. Okay, the other thing is about the children walking on the street. I put up for years, this is the only place I know where people ride bikes on the sidewalk and people walk seven abreast on the street. You ride around any other town high school, you don't see students walking on the street. They walk on the sidewalk or the grass. Okay, now, I really would like an answer. Are we gonna have time clocks? I asked you guys that, nobody had an answer. I asked about bi-weekly meeting. Corporations do that, bi-monthly meetings, so they know what's going on. And I really think for transparency, we should have a monthly report to see how the department heads are trying to keep costs down. And you guys have a barometer to see what's going on. Because we know what happened with the last city manager, taxes went up 50% in seven years. And when the guy brought up a good example about his business, he was told one thing, borrowed money on that information, and now he's struggling. Guys, we're all in the same boat. Thank you.
Just to Jerry's point, can we get an evaluation on what time clock, what the cost of the city would be if we did do time clocks? Because DPW has time clocks, right? They, John or no? Am I wrong on that?
Yes.
They do.
Yes. We're gonna get it?
And what about the meetings, the bi-monthly meetings or monthly reports? It's fair for the taxpayers to know that something's being done about expenses.
They usually do it.
I know Sue doesn't care because she's not running again, but you guys are all running again, so we need some new changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, I don't think so.
Jackie Pappas, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. Thank you all for the wonderful feedback about Oyster Fest. It really was a great weekend for Asbury Park. I do have to thank some of our partners, being the City of Asbury Park and iStar, Madison Marquette, and the leads of Nextdoor for helping us to garner some volunteers to help out with the event. The youth of Asbury Park did a fantastic job. We had three of them with us for the setup of the festival and throughout the festival and the end of the festival. And they were great ambassadors for our city. They worked incredibly hard, and we look forward to welcoming them back at other events. So obviously, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Zombie Walk. Just to let everybody know, obviously, the Zombie Walk is coming on October 4. Even if you are not a zombie enthusiast, it is an amazing day just to be a spectator in Asbury Park. And I can tell you quite honestly that all the businesses from the Boardwalk to the downtown to Main Street need your support when it comes to October. Not to be funny, but that is the dead zone for commerce here. Because we're not quite over the, you know, I think the hump of the school year and not quite settled in on the holidays. And October is a time of year that they could really use your support. So if you can come out and be a spectator and showcase Asbury Park and support what's going on here, it's always appreciated. And the last thing I have to say, I knocked John over, look at that. The last thing I have to say is that we don't often get a chance to tell you what's going on behind the scenes from our business community and their efforts to help the youth of Asbury Park to learn skills and to practice skills. I was amazed to see these young ladies here today from the middle school. And I just, a quick story about one of our members, Chris Daniels, who has put together a Kickstarter program. And he wants to teach the youth of Asbury Park the trade of video. And he thinks it's a very creative outlet, I agree with that. I think any program like that, that shows that it's not just a job that is manual labor. We have a very creative, passionate residential community here. And I just, I don't always get a chance to say it, but you should know that our business community, in addition to just trying to hire kids with the skill set that they have, behind the scenes, there are people all over this city in all different kinds of businesses that are trying to teach experience and different creative trades to our youth. And I support that personally. So we're gonna try and bring those stories to you more as they come to us. So thanks, everyone.
Hi, John Kapler from AP TV. I've gotten comfortable doing this, but this will be the last meeting. I wanted to announce the schedule for the candidates' forums for both the municipal election and the Board of Education election. The Board of Education will have a forum on Tuesday, October 21, at the VFW, starting at 7:00 PM. And the municipal candidates' forum will be the following night, Wednesday, October 22, same start time, 7:00 PM. I just wanted to get some information out there. Same place, VFW. Thank you very much.
What's the date for that?
Twenty-fourth.
What's the date? Twenty-fourth, twenty-seventh. Motion closed, all in favor?
Aye.
You're on to item G on the agenda. Bill, there it is. I have a bill resolution for $1,704,232. Second.
Question. Number one, yes, on call, it says purchase order 14-02623 for $8,273. Yep. I don't want to separate them, you don't have to, but just, that's the negative of that one.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes. Yes, with the exception.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
You're on to item H, applications, special events, and that one by Tom Gilmore during a work session.
Move it.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Can you say we have gravel licenses? Can I use the ball three together?
You can.
We have Monmouth Medical Center. We have Legal Aid Society of Monmouth County, the Premier Theater of Monmouth County. Second. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution to renew a contract with the State of New Jersey for the Bangs Avenue Mirage. Second. Councilmember Warren?
Took a long time to come in, but I'm happy to go, yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Asbury Park and the Policeman's Benevolent Association Local Number Six. Move it. Second. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell? A resolution authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement between the City of Asbury Park and the New Jersey Economic Development Authority for a boardwalk, street, skate, lighting. Move it. Second. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution requesting dedication by rider for Asbury Park Television, AP TV. Move it. Second. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
I have a payroll resolution for $1,368,542. Move it. Second. Councilmember Warren?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell? A resolution authorizing the settlement of a workman's comp in station claim to Captain Michael Pollak versus the City of Asbury Park. Move it. Second. Councilmember Warren?
I've been advised to abstain of the proper transaction.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell? I have a motion of a public hearing, lamenting and supplementing Section 13-2 entitled Abandoned Properties of Chapter 13. Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park. Motion open. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mayor and Council members of the public, this is a very simple ordinance that changes the identity of the enforcing official who is responsible for enforcing the city's abandoned properties ordinance from the Director of Planning and Redevelopment to the Director of Property Improvement and Neighborhood Preservation, or the city managers designate.
Can I ask a question, Frank?
Yes.
Do you want to go to Mike, please?
Who was the Director of Property Improvement and Neighborhood Preservation?
Bob McCune.
Okay. He's the fellow that's just recently hired?
Correct.
Okay. And it says, or the city managers designate. How does that tie in with his official position?
Well, if we lost Director of Property Improvement, I would wanna name some other person without having a problem in changing the ordinance. So with the dynamic organization that we are, there most likely will always be a city manager, but not necessarily Director of Property Improvement. And that manager can choose who should be responsible for implementing the abandoned property act. It'd be simply correct, just with some flexibility.
Thank you.
Motion closed. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
We have a public hearing on an ordinance establishing a restricted parking space for use by abandoned persons at property locations. And first, I'll start by saying that this ordinance was recommended to us by our auditor so that we have an actual formal procedure with regard to the receipt of fees for marriages that are paid to either the mayor or the deputy mayor. The fees come into the city and then are paid from the city to either the mayor, the deputy mayor, whoever performs the ceremony. With regard to the change we talked about, the $75 fee is a defined term in the early part of the ordinance. So anytime there is a reference to the fee thereafter, it's referencing that particular fee of 75. And it appeared to be a little unclear in subsection B2 where it says fees for services. We'd like to change that so that it says the fee, so you know we're talking about that $75 fee. And also where it says, "May thereafter be dispersed to the mayor or deputy mayor," changing that so that it's clear that that shall be thereafter dispersed to the mayor or deputy mayor for the services that are rendered. And with that, I'd ask for you to take a motion in a second to amend the ordinance to effectuate those minor modifications and vote on that. And then once you've amended the ordinance, to take a final vote to adopt the ordinance as amended.
All in favor?
And then we need a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counselmember Moore?
Yes.
Counselmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A public hearing on the ordinance authorizing the City of Asbury Park to convey ameesment over certain portions of the right-of-way area airspace adjacent to the property located at 550 Hookman Avenue, block 3105, block 4, formerly known as block 117, block 10.01. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this ordinance? This ordinance authorizes the city to convey ameesment associated with the property at 550 Hookman for a sign that's associated with the new theater that is going in at that location. It's similar to other signs that have gone up in the CBD like for the showroom and we routinely granted encroachments within the city's right-of-way for airspace and that's what this is.
Is that going to be a marquee?
I agree.
Is that going to be a marquee?
Yes.
And it's going to stand in that little area where they're going to have the theater?
I know. It's going to project approximately six feet into the city's right-of-way. It's depicted on a diagram which, or plans that are on file in the city clerk's office if you'd like to take a look. But yes, it is in the nature of the marquee.
Well, I don't know. That's going to look peculiar there, isn't it?
It's the same thing across the street where Rafferty's is. It's the same, right, the Rafferty's old sign, fish, same thing too?
Yeah.
Sorry.
She's talking about the style.
Planning board granted.
Oh, they granted it?
The planning board granted, but it was subject to getting ameesment for the use of the city's airspace for the marquee.
Okay.
All in favor? Counselmember Moore?
Yes.
Counselmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution requesting dedication by rider for Asbury Park Television, AP-TV. Second. Counselmember Moore?
Yes.
Counselmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A payroll resolution for $1,036,854.20. Second. Counselmember Moore?
Yes.
Counselmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the settlement of a workforce compensation claim to Captain Michael Pollak versus the City of Asbury Park. Second. Counselmember Moore?
Yes.
Counselmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the settlement of a workforce compensation claim to Captain Michael Pollak versus the City of Asbury Park. Second. Counselmember Moore?
Yes.
Counselmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the settlement of a workforce compensation claim to Captain Michael Pollak versus the City of Asbury Park. Second. Counselmember Moore?
Yes.
Counselmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A public hearing on the ordinance authorizing the City of Asbury Park to convey ameesment over certain portions of the right-of-way area airspace adjacent to the property located at 550 Hookman Avenue, block 3105, block 4, formerly known as block 117, block 10.01. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this ordinance? This ordinance authorizes the city to convey ameesment associated with the property at 550 Hookman for a sign that's associated with the new theater that is going in at that location. It's similar to other signs that have gone up in the CBD like for the showroom and we routinely granted encroachments within the city's right-of-way for airspace and that's what this is.
Is that going to be a marquee?
I agree.
Is that going to be a marquee?
Yes.
And it's going to stand in that little area where they're going to have the theater?
I know. It's going to project approximately six feet into the city's right-of-way. It's depicted on a diagram which, or plans that are on file in the city clerk's office if you'd like to take a look. But yes, it is in the nature of the marquee.
Well, I don't know. That's going to look peculiar there, isn't it?
It's the same thing across the street where Rafferty's is. It's the same, right, the Rafferty's old sign, fish, same thing too?
Yeah.
Sorry.
She's talking about the style.
The planning board granted.